2018 regular city council meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But everyone please remain standing. We'd like to ask Reverend Thompson to please come and give us a prayer.
Let us pray. Blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of a scorned fool; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law doth he meditate day and night; and he shall be like a tree that is planted by the rivers of water that bringeth forth fruit in his season. His leaves shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth shall prosper. The ungodly are not sold, but are like the chaff which the wind driveth away. Therefore the ungodly shall not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous; for the Lord knoweth the way of the righteous, but the way of the ungodly shall perish. Gracious and eternal God, our Father, we come to thee in the name of Jesus. Father God, we thank ye for your bountiful blessings. Heavenly Father, we thank ye for the joy that is our strength. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Master, for this great city. Heavenly Father, we come praying, asking, Lord, that thou would look upon these governing officials. Heavenly Father, we're asking that thou will continue to impart wisdom upon them. Heavenly Father, we pray for the citizens of this city, dear God, asking that thou will continue to allow it to bring forth fruit, heavenly Father. We're asking that thou would just continue to bless this village, that it may continue to have children that are prosperous citizens, heavenly Father. We thank you for those that have come out of this city and, heavenly Father, have returned back to do a work. Heavenly Father, we pray thy choice blessings upon this council. We pray thy choice blessings upon this city. And heavenly Father, we will continue to lean upon you, asking, dear Master, that thou would deliver us from all manners of evil and temptation. Heavenly Father, guide us in the pathway of righteousness for your name's sake. Heavenly Father, we pray these blessings in the mighty name of your son, Jesus. And every heart said, "Amen."
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Olden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a quorum.
All right. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Anything we need to add, take off? You have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Board. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Presentations. We have one presentation tonight. Inkster citizens who care, Ruthie Williams.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon.
We got a presentation we'd like to, and I'm gonna let Ms. Jones. Did they get the package? You guys get the information in your package?
Did we? Did we get the information?
We just got the agenda that says you were making a presentation.
Okay. We gave Felicia.
What was I supposed to get, Miss Wobbe?
The presentation information. But that's all right.
I didn't know they were supposed to.
Okay, we'll be all right.
Okay.
All right, so.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me a bad, a peerless, flustered, but one of our honored, beloved... Beloved citizens of Inkster, Michigan is with us, and I'm almost speechless. I know everybody in here, but the young people know Mrs. Noby Hill. Bless her heart! And I would like to request that someone, please, take Mrs. Hill's picture. It must go in all of the newspapers. Inkster citizens who care, chaired by Ruthie Williams, welcome you to the first historical pictorial tribute to the centenarians of the city of Inkster. They are the history makers of the century for our beloved city of Inkster. And those of us who have been here all our life, we love Inkster. This presentation is all about history, the history of Inkster, Michigan. History is very important, and what better way to preserve than pictures? Tonight, we are presenting and unveiling history by way of pictures. In 2015, Mrs. Geraldine Cal- Calley, who lived to be 116 years old, was named the oldest person in the world. She put an international spotlight on Inkster, Michigan. She was featured on national TV, and the event was recorded in numerous publications. In 2017, Inkster citizens who care usually come before you, asking you to buy tickets for coats for the kids. But we're not here to do that tonight. We care about all of our citizens, regardless of their age groups. In 2017, we hosted a luncheon honoring the centenarians residing in our city. At that time, we knew of only five. But as time went by, we discovered there were three additional historic figures residing in our city. That is history. Eight beautiful people, whom the heavenly Father permitted to live 100 and years plus in his beautiful world. He called three of the eight home to live with him during 2017. But we have beautiful photographs of these amazing people. We will unveil and present them to the city of Inkster tonight. And Mayor Nolan has graciously stated that the pictures can be hung in the city hall until perpetuity. Thank you, Mayor Nolan. We implore you, if you know of an Inkster resident who has reached the age of 100, please tell somebody, don't keep it to yourself. Call the city hall, tell somebody. We take this opportunity to thank all of the family members, friends and neighbors who helped us acquire these pictures. It was appreciated. Ruthie has a small gift for each one of you. We wish we could give you a dozen roses, but we can't. Now is the time for the unveiling. Mayor Nolan and me, we are soon privileged for just a few minutes. Thank you. And we would like for you to come down. We have a few family members that are here tonight, and I see Reverend Johnson is here. And he's a pastor of Spring Hill Baptist Church. And Mrs. Noby Hill, longtime member there. Reverend Washington, longtime member there. Let me move out the way. Because we don't really have the... Just doing the best we can. But we want the mayor in the middle. We want the mayor in the middle. Because this is going to... We're gonna send all this information to the Executive Gerontology Research Group in Washington, DC. This is history. This is history. Mrs. Calley was in newspapers, on TV, but she needs to be hanging in the city hall of Inkster. So everybody that comes in here can see her. Now, isn't that beautiful? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Isn't that beautiful? Reverend Harrison, I'm sorry, Reverend. From Spring Hill. All right. Let me move out the way. The second unveiling. Eight beautiful, God-blessed, history icons of the city of Inkster. Mrs. Noby Hill, and she's here. Mrs. Maxine Kenny. Mrs. Nora Scott. Mrs. Ori Lee Williams. Mr. Luke Lampkin. They're at the top. They're still with us. And what is so beautiful, they're still Inkster residents. Mr. Luke Lampkin, he's the only man living now. Lives alone, takes care of himself, accepts very little help. Beautiful. During 2017, three of our beloved, beloved residents of our city went home to be with the Lord in loving memory of Deacon Lomas Raymond Shaw. Better known as Sonny Hart. And the Reverend Chester Washington. I think you all should stand up and applaud these people. Mrs. Hill. This is Mrs. Noby Hill. You know, we don't usually tell women's ages, but we're gonna tell her age. Look at her! Mrs. Noby Hill was October the 19th, 1912. Isn't that beautiful? Wait a minute, we gotta... Where is he? Oh, beautiful! We're gonna send this to Washington, to the Gerontology Research Group. This is a historic picture. If there ever was one, this is it. Bless her. That is beautiful. Now, Mayor, we're not gonna take too much time, but we need pictures here. We need some more pictures. And if you have a camera, if you can capture these pictures, we'd appreciate it very much. We don't have the space the way we would like to have it, but we will make do. We will make do. Isn't that beautiful? Isn't that beautiful? And I have... She was always... Sharp as a lady in Inkster. Utician in the city, but many, many... Well, we gotta do it by... We gotta, we gotta do it. We want a picture of the mayor with the family members. We have family members present. Family members, can you please come up front, please? Family members. Reverend, would you come up, please? Members! All the family members here, present.
Come over the summer?
Oh, not yet. This is gonna take a few minutes, but...
Hey, Buck.
I guess. Better.
I'll have the mayor let you.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention? Now, you gotta act like you love one another. Come forward. Shoulder's in. Your shoulder... Mayor, you should... Shoulder's in. Shoulder's in. Shoulder's in. Shoulder's in. Shoulder's in. Don't... Okay. You want Mrs. Hill? These are historic pictures. They're going all over the world. She don't get back here, baby. Get back here.
She's fine.
She's a center. Hold on. Take your time, honey. Wait, 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 wait. Mayor. Mayor, stay up here. Well, Inkster citizens, please come forward. Inkster citizens who care, please come forward. Oh, Lord, Jesus. Lord, have mercy. Much trouble we had getting that thing. I just can't... I can't get over it. Ooh, you talking about putting the ice on the cake. Well, Inkster citizens who care, come on, we taking up too much time. Come on, we taking up too much time, come around here. Inkster citizen, woo!
Hey, how you doing?
Let's be efficient here. She should be... Jerry, 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 you should be up here. Okay, can we have it quiet for a minute, please? Yeah. You gonna be in for pictures. They must have made me come out from behind. Can we have a little attention, please? Thank you, thank you for your kind attention. Test. Hello? Hello? Thank you for your kind attention. Thank you, dear. Hey, Ruthie. There's some retractions over here on the table. Ruthie. She called a guy, and she said them pictures cost about $90. I need the picture from the 100-year-old. You have your cellphone on you? Do you have your cellphone?
Get him, Mayor, get him. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. David, that's gonna be you one day. Could he have technical difficulties? Hey, Ruthie, we gonna keep rolling. Okay. Okay, everybody consent agenda? You check it out?
Support.
Okay, been properly moved, supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All boards and commissions? Any nominations? We have some... We have some boards and stuff that need some people, right? We'll send out an email to some of the boards that we need to point people to, because we need to point some folks. Okay, previous business, do we have a motion to remove the item off the table?
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported? All those, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Now the items back on the table, could you please read it, Madam Burke?
Consider authorizing the Department of Public Services to approve a contract in the amount of 300... In the amount of $348,788 for ADJ Excavating Inc. for reconstruction of Arcola Street between Somerset and Cherry Hill in the city of Inkster. Additionally requesting authorization to approve an amended contract for Alfred Benish and Company to provide construction engineering, full-time construction inspection, and material testing for this proposed project on a time and material basis not to exceed $100,000.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved. Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Scherrman, this is not an amended, uh, contract. This is something that we're just basically deciding we're gonna pay them, but this has to do with the contract.
Yeah, I think it refers to a prior contract that has expired. So we just... That kinda outlines what we would pay them for their services, so we can probably refer to that. All right, any other discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. New business.
Consideration and approval to accept the Intergovernmental Award Grant from Wayne County in the amount of $12,000 to refurbish the second-floor restrooms at the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consideration and approval for a request from Nankin Transit Commission to approve Canton Township returning back into Nankin Transit.
Support, I mean, uh...
It's properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. All right. Finish all the business on the agenda? We're gonna have public participation now. Tony Bailey.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Treasurer, city clerk, department heads, those who are viewing.
What about him?
And, uh, our city attorney. Those who are viewing, those in the audience, um, before you about our cleanup, our kickoff will be the last Saturday of this month, the 28th. We'll meet up at the Booker Dozier Recreation at 9:00 AM. I do have flyers for those who wasn't at the, uh, previous, um, council meeting. I have the dates. We also will have dumpsters out at the four locations in the city. Wheatley Park, Lamone Park, Westwood Park, and up at the, uh, rec center. Also, that's not on the flyer. We will be giving out to the young people community service certificates signed by myself, the mayor, and the judge. Many of the young people need, uh, to get credit each year. Uh, many of the young people need, uh, to get credit each year, so we will be, we'll be providing the certificate each cleanup date. So, parents, guardian, please come out, um, along with your young people, so you can help, um, supervise. Um, do anybody have any questions? I wanna see everybody out, but one thing I wanna ask, if anybody know of anyone that has like a trailer, um, to help when we have the trash bags put out along the curb, you know, to help the pickup, so we can just put them in the dumpster, so if you know of anybody that has like a trailer that they can, uh, attach on the back of their pickup, or just a pickup truck, and wanna help us go along and pick up the different, uh, trash bags, uh, we appreciate that, um, very much.
All right, thank you. Barbara Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here for the Inkster Goodfellows, no child without a Christmas, we are having our fish fry and spaghetti dinner coming this Friday at the recreational center, Dozier Recreational Center, tickets are ten dollars. Anybody that I haven't, I'm tracking you down. Uh, we appreciate all of your help, and we like to see all of you there, it's between eleven AM and three PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Officer Lebo.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, audience. Just a few things, um, we have our next Coffee with the Cop is we're changing the days from Tuesdays to Wednesdays, just to accommodate a few things that were going on, so it's gonna be the second Wednesday of every month. This next Coffee with the Cop is May ninth, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty PM. We're also going to be alternating, one month will be at six thirty at night, the next month will be at ten AM, so that we can, we can accommodate everybody's schedules, so we're available to as many people as possible. Uh, there's no agenda speeches, just a chance to come discuss things with, uh, various police officers, myself included, usually the chief shows up, commander, sometimes lieutenant, and other patrol officers. So, come on by, have a cup of coffee with us. And next, we all know that as soon as this weather breaks, we're having movie nights again. We'd like to have movie nights again, okay? So, last year they were a great success, they were a lot of fun, we're looking at making them even bigger and better this year, and with that said, funding. We are having our next bake sale, yay. The next bake sale is gonna be May twenty-third, from ten AM to two PM, or until supplies last, they sell out fast, get there early, early. Um, at the Police Department Lobby, like I said, ten AM to two PM, we also are taking donations of baked goods, that is all, thank you.
Thank you. State Senator Coleman A. Young, the second.
Hello, City Inkster.
Good evening.
To the man in this honorable body, my name is Coleman Alexander Young the second. Oh, I didn't even see that, thank you, I'm sorry. I didn't know that was there, I'm sorry. I'm a candidate for Congress, I just wanted to come out here and say it's an honor to be here, I see why the City of Inkster is the pride and joy of Wayne County, and I am excited to get to work and do what I can for this great city. Thank you, God bless you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Pastor Jean Overman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and all of the citizens of the great city of Inkster, I am here for Mother's Pantry. As you know, we've had the springtime bring lots of rain and snow, which brings a lot of difficulties for Mother's Pantry's roof. So, we're currently doing a roof project, so if you know anyone that has skill sets to help with the roof, finances to help with the roof, a connection with Home Depot or a roofing company, we are asking that you call us and let us know. As we all know, Mother's Pantry is a great asset to the City of Inkster, last year alone, we gave over a hundred thousand pounds of food out. So, we are doing a lot of work in the City of Inkster. Don't want you to walk in and the ceiling fall on you, however, as you get your potatoes, so if you know anyone with any connections there's, and I'm really saying this to our listening audience, because we have a lot of people that watch that are not here, and we have great pride in Inkster for helping one another. So, please spread the word, we need help getting a roof for Mother's Pantry, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? You have an estimate for the roof already?
Well, we had a couple of estimates, if we get a professional, eleven thousand, if we get someone with five thousand and their cousin, we know someone that can fix it, so we do need help, thank you.
All right. Yeah, you might have to do the professional. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Um, no comments tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Treasurer, I'm sorry. Come on.
Please forgive me, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, good evening, citizens of Inkster, I just wanted to come say hello again.
My name is John Connors the third, I'm running for United States Congress News District. Um, I give everyone my cellphone number to give me a call whenever you need, so if you wanna take out your cellphone real quick, I can give that to you. Um, 'cause I gotta run away and stay really quickly, but I wanted to come say hello, so my number's three one three, four five one, zero four two four. Um, thanks again for having me, and please do reach out.
Sorry for not getting on the comic card, but good to see you all again, and I'll, of course, be back, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Um, just wanted to let the, um, um, citizens here in the audience and then, uh, citizens watching at home, we have, um, submitted the Mayor's recommended budget as of today. We'll be holding some study review sessions, and everyone's welcome to join us, um, the next two following Mondays will be, uh, the twenty-third and thirtieth, the twenty-third and thirtieth of April, at six o'clock in the evening, we'll be holding, uh, review sessions, we'll be posting the information online, uh, as well as, uh, there'll be a copy of the budget that'll be available here at City Hall if anyone wants to review that, uh, information. Um, lastly, also, as everyone knows, we had a, a pretty severe rain event, um, this past weekend, and, um, put a pretty severe stress on our, um, our water sewer infrastructure, but we're trying to, uh, manage that process, I'm sure the Mayor will speak to that more late, uh, later on, um, this evening, but, um, we continue to encourage people to, uh, call into City Hall, call into the Department of Public Services, um, and we're trying to address all those issues as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Howard. Thank you, Councilman Chisum.
Just wanted to let, excuse me, just let everybody know, let's hurry up getting, getting gear and get our bikes ready, I'm hoping this weather breaks, I'm tired of it, and so, let's get out here, get in good spirits, and get ready to ride.
I hear spandex keeps you warm.
Is that from personal experience?
Councilwoman Mitchel.
Uh, good evening, everyone. A couple of meetings ago, I promised that I would start submitting articles to The Eagle, particularly that would be, um, good news about the City of Inkster, and I would like to invite you to pick up a copy this week, because in the paper, there's a very nice article that I wrote about the Easter egg hunt, and how, uh, successful it was for the City of Inkster. So, we're gonna keep it rolling, I, I want you to let me know what's good and what's happening with you, so that I can do articles and submit them to the paper. I invite you to submit articles to the papers, okay? But I'm just making it part of my mission to make sure that Inkster gets some positive news coverage somewhere. Um, I know you would think, but I would just like to say again, thanks to everyone who supported the Easter egg hunt, it was amazing, there were so many people there. We were so tired, but the children were happy, the parents were happy, the helicopter made us all happy. Uh, and it was just a glorious day, it was a gloomy day, but everybody was high spirited and lots of wonderful things went on, so Inkster, we're on a roll, I tell you. Um, on April twenty-eighth, there's an economic summit in Allen Park, I will provide that for the website. What they're trying to do is, uh, get cities interested in perhaps doing housing that needs to be rehabbed or, or put back on the market in some way, a little differently than what we're doing now. Um, essentially, uh, in some places, they give the housing situation to the community to, to handle. And, uh, it seems to be working in some places, so they will be discussing that. Uh, the Ink Town Derby Party is May fifth. Uh, if you haven't seen the, the kicker cards, it's gonna be an exciting day of fun and festive, festive activities of all kinds. Next, the, um, I've been working with Henry Ford Community College on the, on behalf of the Mayor, and although we don't have a, um, everything firmed up, I just want to give you a heads up that Henry Ford Community College will be coming to the City of Inkster to present classes. And, I'm so, so very, very excited by that, that's been a dream of mine for a long time, the other community college wanted us to come to their campus, I said, no, you can come to us, well, Henry Ford is coming to us. And they're going to begin with sessions that will help business owners do a better job of being business owners. In fact, some of the things are so exciting, I think I wanna take a couple of sessions. So, you will hear more about it as time goes on, I think we're looking at a target date of June or July to start the sessions. Uh, we have found the spot that we want, and basically, all we need to do now is coordinate the professors from the college and the City of Inkster. So, we're moving right ahead, Inkster, and we're just as great as we know we've always been, but we're gonna be even better, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Overman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Counterpart of mine on the border zoning appeal, Norma McDaniel. Named the Michigan Department, Michigan Democratic Party, thirteenth congressional district precinct delegate of the year. I just wanted to be the caller, another citizen from the City of Inkster. That's all I have.
That's nice.
Councilwoman Wiley.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Temp, I didn't forget you today.
Um, let's just have two, maybe three. Um, I know it, the weather's kinda wet right now, but can, um, if we could schedule time where we can fill some of these potholes, especially the ones on Annapolis.
Well, Annapolis, we about to redo the whole street. I think the whole Annapolis is a pothole.
It seems that way, but West London seems to wanna give people tickets for driving on their side, it's getting a little wet.
Always driving on the side.
So, we're figuring they put a little mud in the hole, you know, in two of that time, you know, to save our citizens from getting tickets. Uh, also, you know, due to the rain and some mud and stuff, as we had a couple of citizens. Rectify that problem. Um, we had a couple of citizens, a few citizens in my district, um, who had their basement flooded, and I wanted to assure them that the City of Inkster will be taking care of the issue. I talked with the Mayor, and, uh, we have a, we have a plan, so we'll be getting with you very soon on that, that plan. And please continue to patronize the city and shop Inkster, thank you.
All right. That's two of the things, what he says is take care, what he's saying is take care of the issue, so we don't continue to flood. Uh, we do understand, the people who called in and already let us know your address, thank you, if your basement is flooded, please call my office and give me your address, so we can make sure that the issue's been resolved in your area, okay? My number is three one three, five six three, four two three four. Again, it's three one three, five six three, four two three four.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, if I may, I just wanna say, as far as the potholes concerned, there is over a hundred and sixty-five million dollars appropriated for the state of Michigan in order to fix that across the state, I don't know exactly how that was done, it's gonna be, we're in the process of appropriations right now, so we're talking about how we're gonna be distributing those funds, I'll definitely keep in contact with you, and let you know in the future, along through your state senator, know how much money you'll be receiving, but you will be receiving more money in road funds shortly.
All right, thank you.
All right.
It's good news, of course, but we are aware of Annapolis, Middle Belt, that whole area is, is, uh, had a lot of flooding, and some other areas in the city also. We were lucky we didn't lose as much power, have as many power outages as some of the other communities yesterday, 'cause a lot of communities were out.
And still out.
Still out. Two, the candidates, we have a couple candidates came today, running for thirteenth district, take advantage of this time, stay here, ask them all the questions you asked me, ask them a million questions. Anything you want, ask them, take them, corner them, we have a whole table full of cookies, you can cram cookies in your mouth, ask them questions, we'll leave the door open, you can stay here as long as you want to. But take advantage of the time you have, face to face, and find out what they're about and what they're gonna do if you choose them to represent you. Um, so just make sure you take advantage of it, and eat all the cookies, if you don't eat them, I'll take them home, please.
Oh, yes, he will.
None of us up here need any more cookies. At least I don't. Lunch with the Mayor is on Thursday, we'll have some good food, of course, good conversation, I'm sure a couple of candidates will hopefully stop by, so we can, uh, hit them with the third degree of questions and, uh, show them a little hospitality. So, hope to see you out there twelve, at noon on Thursday at the Rec Center. And I think that's all we got, you ready to go home?
Motion for adjournment?
Support.
Support.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.